Let's see, Tova just emailed me. What did she say? Uh, Tony should be here in Vegas. If not, uh, we can't really vote on anything tonight, which is okay. We can have some discussions on things.
And so I just saw Tova on the road, so she said she was coming.
Oh, cool. So, uh, Tova says, uh, that there's a new initiative to strengthen soil health. That's pretty cool. Hopefully she'll discuss it a little more tonight. Oh, it has to do with the Green Bank.
Yeah, she was filling me in on some of it. But she could like to hear the whole thing. That'd be fun.
Yeah. Tova's just a wealth of knowledge, man.
I know. It's incredible.
Let me give people a couple more minutes. Um, so we can't improve the minutes tonight. That's okay. Improve them next month.
What's your, what's your quorum? Is it three or four?
Four.
Four?
Yeah. Uh, Tony was having, uh, a conflict today. Lorenzo, um, is on work, traveling things, uh, out in Vegas and then, uh, Kathy emailed a little while ago saying she had a conflict. So, so that doesn't really work.
Okay, we just had a zoning meeting last night, so I know sometimes, you know, we usually have plenty and, you know, if enough people, usually, I think it was like a January meeting when we were still meeting in person, you know, when we used to do that. Like a novel idea to meet in person. Then all of a sudden it was like, nobody could come or something happened. It's like, okay, cancel the meeting.
Yeah. We may have to if people don't sign on here in a minute. Otherwise it's just Caitlin and I making decisions, but I mean, I mean, is that a date, Kate? Cause, uh, like you and I are talking about doing a farmer harvest fest for November.
Yeah, I think it'd be important. For Roxbury.
Yeah, um. Yeah.
Where would you do it? At the park?
Well, we're not sure. It was kind of an idea that we were throwing around last month and then we just wanted to get through Bat Fest this month and, you know, all those out of the way. Um, and then we were thinking about maybe just like showcasing some of the farms, like we could do like interviews or something like that with the farmers, put it up on Facebook and Insta. Um, maybe just like direct them towards any special events or something. I think we talked about like a directory of some sort too.
Something along the- Kind of like a, you know, like you have a wine trail.
Yeah.
Farm trail.
Farm trail. Let me write that in so we don't forget. Farm trail. Hello, Kate.
Hi. I'm Kim.
Hi, Kim. I'm Kate.
Hi, Kate.
Uh, I'm Erin. I also have my other one up there.
Nice to meet you guys.
You as well. Hi Jess. Oh, I don't know if she can hear me yet. Okay, good. Alright, so now that we have a couple more people from, uh, the commission, I'll go ahead and call it to order at seven oh three. Uh, so we have joining us, we have Kim Tester. Thank you. And we have Kate Nixon. Thanks for joining us, ladies. So, uh, Kim, I don't know if you and Lorenzo discussed anything specific, but, um, if they're just sitting in just to see, you know, what, what goes on or did you, okay.
Yeah, really. I just, you know, if anybody had questions for me, it's fine too, but I just, you know, um, last month Patrick was able to get to all the commissions and boards and I hadn't been able to do that. And, um, you know, the last, it was, you know, it was Gary Steinman that I, you know, would talk to about the Conservation Commission, you know, for all those years. So it'd been a long time since I'd been, uh, on, or at least visited. Um, and I figured I'd just check in and see what was up. Hi Jess.
You guys.
Oops.
Sorry, trying to get the computer. I can hear everyone. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I gotta turn my volume down.
Hey, Tony.
Hi, how you doing?
Good. Glad you could join us. Uh, we just called, uh, things to order here, so. Just in time.
Yeah, I saw that you were down some people here.
Just a couple. So, but all good.
Let me see if I can turn this down. Is that better? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yeah, you're good. Actually, I think we can go ahead and seat, uh, Kate, Caitlin and Jess. I think we can go ahead and seat you as a regular from alternate. So then we can actually vote if we have to, which would be nice. So, we'll go ahead and add that in. Oh, and there's Tova. Perfect. Okay, uh, so, uh, let's see, first item of the agenda is just a approval of the September thirteenth minutes. Did anybody have anything to add? Any corrections?
Um, no.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
We'll make a motion.
Thank you, Tony. In a second. Uh, either Caitlin or Jess. Anyone second?
Second.
Second, okay. Alright, and then next on, um, the agenda is Bat Fest. So from what I heard, the tractor parade went really well. Who, who was there? Could you speak to it?
Go for it, Kim. I was there doing the, um, the bat house building and decorating and we had a lot of interest and yeah, so I think next year i- it would be, it would be a good thing.
Okay. Um, alright, and then the, um, Tony, you were at the height with John at, um, uh, the land trust, right? How'd that go?
Well, uh, we had, I don't know, fifteen or sixteen people attending.
Okay.
Um, there was, because a lot of interest in the, the, the mining aspect of the preserve, but, uh, John and I brought up, um, you know, bats is an issue and I, I did remind everyone that, uh, we're, that the Conservation Commission has this, uh, October program called Bat Fest and that, uh, they should, you know, go to our Facebook page and get more acquainted with it. I actually think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea. I mentioned this to you, Erin, that we, or even if we have email addresses, we can send them a letter.
Okay. Yeah.
Sometimes paper letters are very effective, uh, particularly with many of them somewhat versed to social media and to using the internet.
Yeah. Once you get me those waivers, Tony, I'll just, I'll look up addresses and I'm, I'm happy to do that. I'll send out some letters.
Uh, okay, you might have, you might have email addresses, because, because I have, I'm sorry?
I do have some, but not all of them.
Yeah, I, I, I will have all of them. I, I have the ability of looking up all the home addresses. Cause I have a file for everybody in Roxbury, the, the work I do on the, uh, Scholarship Commission. So I'll get that. You can get some John.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. Alright, um, anything else, Tony?
Monday, Monday is that lecture, correct?
Yes, so.
Not exactly, because I saw I have a commitment and I was wondering if I can't end it. Could I see it? I, a recording of it?
Uh, yes, we're gonna record it by Zoom, um, and I will be there, um, on Sunday. But here's the, the catch is right now we only have seven people signed up. Um, so Lorenzo, uh, I spoke to Lorenzo very briefly and just said, you know, where's the cutoff here? Like, at what point do we say, you know, is it worth it, uh, to do the in-person or maybe just have her do a Zoom lecture? Um, I'm not really sure. So I wanted to open that up for discussion because I, um, like, as I said, like right now, there's just seven people signed up. But I mean, and that could change, like with the hike, I think I only had like nine people signed up the day before. And as you said, sixteen people showed up. So, uh, what, what, what's everyone's thoughts?
Actually, I'm not sure if more than, how many more than nine showed up. I, I just remember saying, this was a good number. If we had more, it would be a little difficult to manage it. But I'm not exactly sure how many signed up. Anyway, s- seven people signed up to show up in person?
Yes.
I don't know if I don't know if it's worth having it in person. We just, we just do it via Zoom.
Mm-hmm. That I thought as well.
What time was it scheduled?
One PM on Sunday.
I think it just cuts into the middle of the day.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it was the time that she could do it when I asked her about Sunday, so that might be why. Um, but if we did it Zoom, you know, then we can make it available. Again, if, if she's okay with that, if I can get her permission, we could always make it available and have it posted maybe on Facebook or something, or send it out.
Would it be amenable to changing the time? Like to maybe a week later or?
Um, I can ask her, uh, if we can reschedule it. Yeah.
Don't we have the story walk the following week? That's Saturday.
Yeah, on the twenty-second.
Yeah.
We have something every weekend, uh, this month.
Yeah.
Um, I talked to Teresa, uh, Roxbury, the director tonight at the library briefly, um, and she thought, you know, maybe even a spring event or, you know, we could do it outside. Um, and because Maureen didn't tell me, like, she didn't give me a solid, like, yes or no, she would be bringing a little bat friend with her. Um, and I thought that would probably attract more people, although I'm a small animal nerd, so for me, that'd be really cool. Um, maybe not so much for others. Um, so uh, maybe it would be a better program for when it's warmer out, more people, maybe with it getting colder or just the time of year. I'm not really sure, so. It's wherever, whatever, whatever the, the group decides here, I'm good with.
If she was, I mean, I'm okay with that. If she was willing to do that, maybe. You know, trying to, what would you, let me ask you this. What do you think we would have to do with the seven people that already signed up? We just tell them it's postponed or?
Yeah, I mean, they all signed up, uh, via email and I have a, I have a list, so I could just send it out and say, you know, uh, due to low signup, you know, we've had to reschedule, uh, to the spring or due to unforeseen circumstances or what have you, so.
Cause I think if you rescheduled before, let's say the following Sunday, it wouldn't be enough lead time to get more people to sign up.
Right. But it's also been up for about, mm, just over, just about a month, I think it's been up. Um, we've been posting it on social media and there was a press release that went out and the land trust had it out too, as well as the library, so. That's why I'm kind of like, I don't know if it's a, an interest issue or if it's, um, a timing issue, you know?
Yeah, I know when we, in, when we had that, we had a, um, a Zoom presentation on climate change, um, it must've been about nine months ago, a year ago. I, I don't think that many people attended the, the lecture.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd hate to reschedule and then the same seven people, you know? I mean, who's to say? Then that poor woman is, you know. Well, I mean, seven people, that's, that's pretty darn good. But like you said, I don't know if it's worth it or, or anything, but any little.
Didn't even sign up for in-person, but we don't know how many people signed up pretend by Zoom, right?
Yeah, I mean, these are just all people that are saying they're gonna be there in person, so who knows? I mean, when we actually do the Zoom portion of it, more people could sign on. Unfortunately, I won't know until the day of.
So, will it be available by Zoom also?
Yeah. Yes, Tova.
Erin, what it was publicized, was the Zoom link given? I don't remember.
No, I don't think it was, because at the time we weren't sure if she was open to that, to having it available via Zoom. And Teresa, uh, wasn't sure what equipment we would have available to us because of staffing issues for the library. Um, so I, it, it really was dependent upon tonight and what we decided to do moving forward, just whether or not we would get the Zoom link to go ahead and do it. So.
Um, I don't know, I'm, I'm between it.
Yeah.
Autumn, autumn events are kind of notoriously, um, dicey on attendance in general, you know, all, all that sort of thing. I think, you know, I mean, that's what I found anyway. Spring events have much better attendance, but, you know, I mean, you're tying it in with the, the bat, you're tying it in with the, the, you know, the Bat Fest, so there's that tie-in. And in spring, it would be sort of like a non sequitur.
Yeah.
You've got all that momentum that you've created with this event. I think, um, maybe, uh, would, if it would be possible to try to get a little bit more publicity around it, um, that would be, you know, I, 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 I think that everything is always last minute. Especially in autumn, you know? Knowing, I, I'm, I mean, I intend to go, but I haven't signed up, so. Guilty.
Plus you're talking about having littles, having to sit and listen, you know, so, uh, that's tough. I mean, I know when I was a little, I wasn't able to like sit for a long period of time as opposed to the tractor show where there was other things going on and, you know, they could get, so maybe they weren't, people aren't quite sure what to expect as opposed to, you know, just sitting there and having a lecture. You have a six-year-old not gonna be able to sit and lecture. Like you said, if she has a bat friend with her, that might actually add something. So maybe, like Tova was saying, the added publicity of saying, hey, this is gonna be available. Maybe we can do a craft or something or, I don't know, make a bat mask or listen to me with all these ideas.
Which, happy to do that, but so far I'm the only person there and Teresa me in charge of, uh, running everything and like all the, the equipment and everything.
Is it, is it only, I mean, is it an adult program or a children's program?
I, from what I've heard about Maureen, she's fantastic. I guess she, like, sh- she, um, she can pretty much cater to whatever audience shows up that day. Um, so my sense is that, you know, right now it's all adults. So m- my sense is that regardless of who shows up, she's gonna be great and, and she'll, she'll do a, a good job with that, so. Um, she, uh, she's, uh, spoken at the Beardsley Zoo before. That's where, actually where I got her name from, was a friend of mine that works down there and the kids absolutely love her. So, and try and find, I'll ask my friend at the zoo, maybe she has like a picture of her, um, giving the lecture down there. I could try posting that, see if it gets a little bit more attention than just the posts that we've been putting up. Um, cause it's very actu- it was super hard to find any sort of information for her or on her. Um, look back like a couple of years to find any sort of information, like biographical information about her. Um, so, yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to my friends at the zoo and see if they have anything. Um, so I feel like the consensus is to, to go ahead with it. Is that, is that what I'm getting?
I think that we're leaning that direction as a group. Wouldn't it be possible to get another announcement in out through in the email blast?
Oh, uh, yeah, I'll, I can do that.
Yeah, cause if, that, you know, my people, this Sunday, one o'clock, don't, you know, wanna fuck it up. It'd be a great lecture on bats. And for kids and adults alike.
Yes.
Hey, if you can tell her, her, uh, lecture to, to the audience, then you know, the job that they're both adults and kids.
Okay. Cool. I will do that then. And also I'll have refreshments there too, so we should be good with that.
If anything changes, Erin, this Sunday, I will reach out to you if I can, if I can come.
Okay.
Sure, yeah.
Sure. Cool.
I mean, if I'm, I, I'll come and I can help you, Erin, with, um, whatever you need. I, I don't know, you know, usually I can do run a projector and all that good stuff.
Thank you, Tova. I appreciate it.
I, I have a commitment Sunday, but it may, I may be able to, I don't know what time it is, so it may work.
Cool.
We're not gonna leave you hanging.
Thanks, guys.
Question, is that all right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so when you say an email blast, do you mean through the town or you have your own, just your own?
Yeah, Barbara. Yep.
Okay, yeah, cause that one just came out today, so I wasn't sure.
Okay, I'll send it to her. Hey, pretty please.
Um, I think it's fairly flexible. I think if you just ask her to send it out, she'll.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe we probably would have to do that tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll do it tonight. I'll send it to her. That's no problem.
Could entitle it, "We're All Going Back."
Oh, I love it. Writing that down so I don't forget. Okay. Alright, um, the other, so the next thing for Bat Fest that I have on my list, um, was the Story Walk, which is on the twenty-second at, uh, six thirty. Um, I talked to Teresa tonight. She said the work night was gonna be, um, on Thursday at four PM for those that could make it. And she was asking if anybody had an update on a goblin. I don't know where that was left off, if, if she had reached out to any of you specifically about the goblin. I know she had talked about it briefly at the last meeting. It also could be Lorenzo, uh, thing too, and he's not here, so.
What, what does that mean?
Uh, so she had a goblin that she wanted to be at the Story Walk, but she wanted like ideas as to how we could execute this. Um, and she had brought it up at the last meeting and then tonight when I talked to her, she, um, asked for an update on it. But again, I don't know if that's like Lorenzo and he just forgot to mention it earlier. Um, he's, he's been running around kind of crazy, so. What was that, Tony?
Kathy isn't, uh, a part of the group tonight?
Yes. Yeah, I had Kathy down for that. I don't know if I had anyone else that can work.
Uh, no, I, I'll, I'll help out on Thursday, um.
Okay.
I did, I did tell Teresa I would help around. I have extension courses, but I don't have any goblin. I bet you Ron has some goblin stuff.
Yeah. Okay, um, so, uh, for anyone else that would like to help out at all with the Story Walk, just reach out to Teresa. Um, I'll send out her email to everybody, so you have it. Um, and then the last thing is trunk or treat, um, on the thirtieth. I'm not sure what time it is. I think usually it's like they have their school dance and the school dance lets out and then they, everybody comes over afterwards. Honestly, it's like, uh, six, six-thirty somewhere in there. Um, and so I was gonna run down to Michael's and get a whole bunch of stuff and make it look like a bat cave in one of our vehicles. Um, I have no problem using mine. Um, so I was gonna make it look like a little bat cave, um, and we'll just need candy if anybody, you know, if everyone could pick up like a bag of candy or something and drop it off or. I think, um, the, the boxes are usually out in town, but I didn't know if because of COVID, if we weren't doing that or, I don't know. So, yeah.
That's on the thirtieth?
Yeah, so if you wanna help out, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, I work in the morning, so it should be, I'm gonna put it on my calendar.
Cool.
Trunk or treat.
So that was the thirtieth at what time again? I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'll ask, um, and when I find out, I'll let everybody know. I, in the past, I thought it was like six o'clock after the, the school party let out across the street.
A little earlier than that because I, uh, when is daylight saving time? Everyone, because they usually try to have it, I mean, the, there's a lot of real little kids that come a little earlier and, um, and they're adorable.
Yeah.
Are we gonna dress up?
Uh, we can, and I was gonna dress up my dogs as little bats.
Nice.
They're good girls. They're all super kid-friendly. Yes, I'm talking about you. Yes, she's staring at me like, what, what are we doing?
What now, mom?
What now? Yeah, so.
Well, I'm looking at the most recent, um, email blast from Barbara. It just came out today and it says, Conservation Commission, October Bat Fest.
Cool.
The Roxbury Conservation Commission is proud to announce a Bat Fest. We've dedicated an entire month to these beneficial flying mammals with activities every weekend. And then there's a click on for the Conservation Commission Facebook page.
Okay.
So just so you know.
Good, if that one's been out a few times, it'd probably be good if the actual event instead of just here, you know?
Yeah.
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 Sunday or whenever, you know? Yes, I agree. Okay. Anything else on, uh, Bat Fest or trunk or treat or anything? Okay. Uh, Jess, did you have anything to add about the, the five G bill? I know it already passed. Um, did you wanna expand on that at all?
Um, I just wanted just to give a summary because I, um, I have missed the last few meetings, so I just, um, uh, just wanted to give a summary and say that it did pass, but it was basically rewritten. All of the language of it was changed quite a bit. Um, and it was presented thirty-six hours prior to the vote. Um, and so there was no, um, opportunity for public discussion or opposition or anything like that, so it kind of got snuck in there. Um, also, some of the representatives that we were in contact with said that it was presented to them in a different way, meaning that it was presented as a study and not an actual deployment of the system. Um, but if you look around, you'll see that they're already implementing things. There's a canister right across the street from my house. Um, that's got put up sometime, so. Um, but there was, uh, so it's already, it's passed and, um, of course, it sounded really great and it probably sounds great to a lot of people and that are not reading the whole bill because it was, um, promoted and introduced as equity and access to broadband, which of course we want all the underprivileged areas and, and hard-to-reach areas to, to get that. But, um, in August, uh, there was a, um, case one, the Environmental Health Trust won a case against the FCC, um, because of their uh, the, um, exposures, um, their, 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 uh, report, it hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety-six. And of course, it's obvious that we didn't have all of the technology that we have now in nineteen ninety-six, so there's, there's some lawsuits against them and there's some, some, uh, good direction, positive direction going to, uh, get that updated or at least make people aware of the health issues that can come from this that have not been completely studied and put out there, um, for everyone to know about. Um, and I'm a part of a, of a group, um, it's, you can, anybody can have access to it. It's, uh, C T for R T dot com. It's Connecticut Residents for Responsible Technology. And, um, there's some action groups within that group, um, that are doing, uh, different tasks for action, um, to, for education and, uh, I'm gonna be part of a global EMF monitoring network. So I, um, have meters that measure EMFs and dirty electricity. And I'm gonna go around in our town and neighboring areas and measure the areas and see if we can notice any change in the, um, readings, um, uh, at, you know, as we go along. So, I'll be happy to, you know, do that later to, for people if they want to have their house read or their, their place of business read or whatever. Um, and then, uh, Um, and then uh. So that's, that's what I know so far is um, that there's, you know, a few task force that are kind of moving forward with actions. To, to try to, and, and we can possibly, we talked about doing this through the Conservation Commission and the library. Maybe having some sort of informational kind of seminar lecture or something, just to make people aware of it.
Do you have someone in mind that you would like to see give that lecture, like a group or a specific person?
We have, um, I can't remember her name like right na- right now, but she's, um, her name is Blake, and she lives in, she's a Washington resident.
Okay.
Um, and there's a couple of other people, um, that uh, my group I'm part of, Patrons of the Planet, who are local ladies. Um, that are connected to, um, but Blake is heavily involved with it. I don't know if she'd be willing to speak, but she's definitely connected to other people. Um, that, that do the presentations, so we might think about considering doing that at some point.
So what constitutes, um, I don't know, this is all new. What constitutes dirty electricity? What is that? What does that mean?
Dirty electricity is just the basic, um. Uh, from appliances in your home, and uh, that, that's just like the reading of the magnetic fields. Just from appliances and electrical things, but this bill was to implement, um. Uh, the Bill six, four, four, two that I was talking about, that I had spoken about back in the spring. Um, there was several of us that were standing up against it, um, and spoke out against it in a seven hour. Um, public hearing, and uh, there were a lot of the big telecom companies too that spoke out against it. And it was interesting to hear their perspective, but basically, we are um, just wanting to. Uh, you know, have people be aware of the dangers that five G can, can uh, create. Because it's so much more powerful than even just four G and three G that we're on right now, and of course. You know, in our P O C D, there's a lot of people who want faster internet or better service and that sort of thing. Because we all live out in the country, and there's lots of home businesses, and of course, we want that for students and for anybody who needs to be connected. Um, but the problem is, the basic problem is that it's not been, the, the health studies are not there. And I know I'm a beekeeper for a decade, and I know that it's affect, affects the pollinators. Um, it affects all animals and, and uh, human beings, and, and it affects everything. They, I mean, they've even, they, there are studies that, that show the trees and the foliage that is damaged. The towers and stuff, and so it's just something we need to be aware of and not just be like, oh, okay, great, technology and communication. It is great to have that, but um, we have to be aware of the, of the problematic sides. Because it's, it's very serious, and a lot of people think that it, it's not that serious, and it, it is. There's lots and lots of published studies. Years now, forty, fifty years that show all of the damage that it can do. So that's just what we've been asking people to consider, um, try to spread awareness about.
Uh, Jessica, there, there are other options though for getting faster internet. Doesn't have to be five G, correct?
Right, and um, from what I'm, you know, I'm just learning about a lot of it too, and uh, you can get. From what I understand it, you can get service to. To your pro. And to have it in your house, you want to have your house hardwired, so there's lots of different ways to do it. Um, and, but you just wanna be able to turn it off, because you don't wanna have your house completely being. E M F'd all the time, and well, you know, the thing, oh, okay, well, it's. It's a electromagnetic frequency, and a better way to understand it is it's microwave radiation. So basically, when you have it on, even your cellphone, um, if it's connecting to the towers, if it's on. Then it's, you're basically getting microwave radiation, and it's, it's, I mean, anybody can understand that. That's like being in a microwave, you know, just put yourself in a microwave, that's what it's doing. So, um, so yeah, there are other, there are lots of other ways to, there's, um. They call it, um, uh, what do they call it? Uh, there's a bi- a bio person that can come and read your house, and uh, a bio engineer or something like that. That you can come and read your house, and it's pretty expensive, I think, but um. With, there's other alternatives that you can do that are not expensive, and just want people to be aware of them. Like turning your cellphone off and not sleeping with it in your room, um, and that sort of thing, just little things like that that can help people. Not be exposed all the time.
We've been telling students all these years to not ha- um, the boys in particular, don't put your phone in your pocket. Because it's gonna affect your reproductive capability. There's, you know, those, those studies have been out too. That there's some concern there, so they're like, what? You know, they, it just, this information just doesn't go out, you, you don't hear about it, so I think that's important.
Yeah.
Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Um, any other questions, comments about the five G bill? I think um, maybe if you guys agree, we should revisit so that we can, but uh, as Tova said, you know, like springtime uh, seems to get a better draw. So I think maybe if we uh, table it for the spring, come back, revisit, maybe we could all do some independent, um, like peer reviewed research. See what we can find, and then uh, maybe put together, um, like it'll, uh, someone in who could, who can give us a good presentation on it. We can put together some pamphlets or something. Okay.
I have a lot of that information already that I can pass along.
That'd be great, yeah. Jess, if you wanna send it to me, and I'll send it to the rest of the group, um, that way. That sounds great, thank you. All right, so the next thing on uh, old business, last meeting we had, um, discussed trying to get in a. Um, workday down at uh, Joey's Trail. The Boy Scouts did a lot, and they, they helped us out a lot. Um, with clearing a lot of the, the vegetation and the brush away from the trail. Um, but the uh, trail itself needs a little bit of a. Redefining, um, and there was also, I guess you could classify it as vandalism, um, there were some. Uh, where the little, the plaque is for, for Joey, there was um, like a semicircle of, of stones. There, and they've now been moved and are in this odd kinda, in my opinion, a little creepy shape. Um, out behind it, uh, so it just, it was weird, like, it was just kinda like ominous when we saw it. It was like, oh, that's, that's kinda weird, um, so it needs to be re, redone a little bit, the landscaping around that area. Um, we were gonna try and do it before the Story Walk. I know I have very little time prior to that. I didn't know if anybody else had any time. Um, and I think Lorenzo was supposed to follow up on uh, access to some wood chips or mulch to put down. Um, I don't know what the status is there, so. And going into winter, I don't think is necessarily the best time to be redoing anything, um, Tova would agree. Uh, so I think maybe uh, we should shoot for like spring, maybe like post mud season. Um, and try and do a little reworking there. What, what do you think, Tova?
I mean, are you sure that um, the uh, stone moving wasn't just what? I mean, we've had so much rain.
It was.
Oh, in a definite shape.
Yeah, definitely manmade.
Okay, because, um, you know, I, I, I mean, there was really sufficient rain to move rocks.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but I, I think uh, putting mulch down, now you're gonna get spring runoff. And that sort of thing, I mean, I, 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 if it's safe for the kids to do the Story Walk, though, that's the question.
Uh, I agree, and I, I thought it was fine. None of the scouts had an issue, and I think they did a great job clearing off anything that would've like caught anyone by. Around the feet or anything like that. They did a really great job with that, so I, I don't think there's anything to worry about. Um, I, and I think it would probably be better to do it a day later in the spring.
I mean, things like um, composting, that sort of thing, NOFA always recommends doing it in the. In the spring rather than the fall because of runoff, and you know, so that's something we always, we always try to factor in.
If somebody needs to have some um, wood chips just to touch up and make something look nice. You know, I've got huge piles, and somebody could come with a pickup and just load it in the back, it's fine, so let me know.
Thank you, Kim.
Yep. Cuz that, that might be a different issue, you know, doing the whole thing, and then just having something that just temporary kinda looks, you know, make it look walk.
So they had done some pretty like uh, coarse wood chips through there, and it looked really nice, but then there's like a, there's just one section. Like maybe like the first about like third or so of the trail that it didn't have any wood chips left there. Um, and it just, I think it would help to kinda uh, maintain that a little bit better, because the, the foot traffic is not uh, that heavy through there. Not like it is at like some of the land trust preserves where you constantly have that wear and tear on the trail, you know, so that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Just gonna, that's a possibility, but um. You need, you're gonna need a number of people to go out there to do the work, put those chips down. I, I know, I know from experience, putting chips down is uh, it's a project, cuz you gotta, it's a lot of moving, uh, you know. Wheelbarrows of chips and spreading them out.
Yeah.
You need some right away. There may still be some um, up behind the community garden. Uh, there was a pile up there for a while. There may still be a li- um, some left up there that, that could be used if they needed to be used.
Let me, gotta get a pickup truck there. That's, I don't think that's so much the issue as getting the labor to spread them out.
Um, Tova, I think as far as that, I think we were, um, Lorenzo had said something about maybe asking the Boy Scouts again if they'd like to help and do that. As a project again with us, um, and maybe just put it out there, you know, cuz I remember when uh, I think when uh, this was before my. On the commission, I think I remember seeing a lot of like email blast from Barbara about workdays for, for Joey's Trail. Um, so we might be able to do that again and get the community involved, and you know, spread some awareness about it, cuz I really don't think a lot of people realize it's back there. You know?
Or what about reaching out to the school, um, to see if any of the high school students need to have their community service hours or?
We can do that.
I could, somebody might really love to do that and then get the credit for it too, you know?
All these are good, but it's, it's a timing issue. We're gonna try to do this before um, the Story Walk?
Well, that's what, that's what Tova was saying, is that, you know, fall is not really the best time, and as long as safety wasn't an issue. It's not really worth it to do it now with, with all the off in the water, and it just, it doesn't help. Uh, which, I mean, right now it is safe, but um, we went through there. Uh, it's just bef- after the last meeting, I think it was, that we went through there, and it was, it was totally fine. There was nothing hazardous. I think there was like one branch that was kind of in the way, and we just moved it, and it was no big deal. All right, anything else on Joey's Trail?
I'll take a walk with uh, next week or so.
That sounds good. Thank you, Tony. All right, so just a couple more things, um, so in our new business, we have uh, the annual report. Tony, did you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, it took a little more doing than I thought it was gonna take. I, I uh, this is supposed to come from the chair, but uh, but Lorenzo asked me if I would. Put something together, so I uh, I went through all of the meeting minutes. Um, for the fiscal year, and that's the year ending uh, June thirtieth, two, tw- two, two, one. And uh, I, I just made a list of all of our accomplishments. Uh, all of the discussions we've had, and all of the things we wanna pursue in the upcoming years, so if you read it. It looks like, um, you know, when I have things we're planning to do, it looks like, well, we're already doing them, and that's because we're already four months, five months into the fiscal year. But um, I, I gave it to Lorenzo, I gave it to um, Erin, and I said, look, did I miss anything? Uh, did I, is there stuff that needs to be toned down or embellished? You know, I, I mean, it reads, when you read it, it's three pages, it looks like, gee, we got a lot of, we got a lot of stuff done, but. These things always read that way. Particularly if you get somebody like me to write them, but. So, um, you know, I've, um, I have a background in trying to write things. Make whoever uh, needs the uh, their form to do that, so. Did, did you pass it out to the group? I didn't see that.
I'm sending it right now.
It, uh, it's due the end of October.
Yes. All right, everybody should have just gotten it, with the exception of Kim. I don't have your email, but I'm happy to forward it to you if you'd like.
Sure, that'd be great. You ready? K T E S T E R. Five one. At email dot com.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
So keep in mind, Kim, it's not official yet.
What, the, oh, the report?
Yeah. If this goes into a binder, or the, all, all the town commissions have to submit their annual report. And then it goes into a binder for the year. That is my understanding of it. And um, I, I use the same format that Ron had used last year when he wrote it.
I didn't think you missed anything at all, Tony. I thought it was great, um, and I just said apologies, everybody. It's been a little busy. My wedding reception was less this past Saturday, so I've been a little busy up until like.
I, my suggestion would be, uh, if, read it over, and then, yeah. Have any comments, questions, find any typos. Get them back to, uh, I guess, Erin, you're the point person on this.
That's fine.
Then we can discuss. You can send it to me, but Erin, you're, you're digging the weed on this, right?
I can. Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a deadline of one week, so just make sure you have any additions, edits, or corrections to me by next Wednesday. Um, and that way, uh, we can send a final looksee back out to everybody, make sure there's n- nothing else that we can get it submitted to the town. Okay. All right, uh, anything else on the annual report?
Uh, just one other thing, there's. You're gonna see, there's a list of people who, they're, they're listed on there as either alternates or commission members. And that was as of the end of the fiscal year, so that, that's changed a bit now. I know that we had one resignation since the end of the fiscal year, but I still have. Still have that person listed as a, as a seated member, I think. I mean, it's a snapshot. And six months later, things have changed.
Yeah, I would think in, right in those reports, you could just list who was uh, an active, active member. You know, as of the end of the year and former, depending on how long they stayed, but it probably doesn't matter.
Active members at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Hi. All right, anything else for the annual report? All right, so, um, we already kinda have to start thinking about November's project. Um, Caitlin had this really great idea, I think it was uh, August meeting. Um, to have like a focus on the farms uh, in town, cuz we have quite a few of them. And I think that was a really fantastic idea, um, and so she was talking about a farm trail. Would you like to speak a little bit more to that, Caitlin?
Well, I think it's interesting. I'm only six years here, and I only know a few of the farms, and they're, you know. They're starting to, to wane off, and you know, the Bronsons and, and Topland and all that good stuff. I would just love to have, you know, showcase them, you know, maybe, you know, one a week or something like we're kind of doing. You know, one a week or something like we're kind of doing with Bat Fest to really, you know, honor them and what they built. That's all.
Um, are you talking like through, like, we'll do like some social media posts, like on every, every, has its own like. Okay, um, I know you said like doing like a farm trail, kind of like how they have like wine trails or I know like there's uh things. There's such a thing as like a yarn trail. I used to waitress, I'd have people stop here. Yeah, every year, they, they were like religious about it. And they do this yarn trail that went up into Massachusetts and came back down into the northwest corner of Connecticut, which I thought was really. Yeah.
I mean, like going to, you know, Maplebank Farm and you pick up a token or something and you can like put it on a. You know, something that we've put out, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be really cool. Um.
Maybe we can work with the historical society.
Yeah.
I can't hear you, Tony. I'm sorry.
History of these forms.
Oh, the history, the history of the farms?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they've bi- bicentennial farm, two hundred years, you know? How many people can say that?
But before everybody got there, you actually also talked about interviews, maybe interviewing.
That'd be great if we could get, you know, some of the old timers.
Even the young ones, like, so you got um like Riverbank, but he doesn't have an open area there to go and. Necessarily have people use like a storefront. So you have to be careful with like. A s- uh farm like that, that might not want people trampling around.
Yeah, maybe they could come up to the library or, you know, I know Top. Right, the, am I wrong that the Topland Farm has the Historical Society building there?
They have a lot of what used to be in old Roxbury days. He has a lot of that antique equipment and, and tractors. It's actually really fascinating.
It is amazing. We've been a few years, yeah, even before we moved here, so. Um, when we moved into the house, we, we had bought Bucky Lowe's house. And in the walls downstairs, he used as, um, I don't know what you call when you put up sheet rock. Those, those little, I don't know, forms or something, and they were old Roxbury day um rulers.
Oh, slats.
Whole slats, yeah, we had a whole bunch of those, so I would be tickled to pass those on too. So I mean, something to think about, like you said, Riverbank doesn't really have that storefront, but perhaps we can have, you know, something at the library or something at. Toplands, but again, it's talking to, you know, a lot of the owners if they'd be willing to do that.
You might want to also consider the Roxbury Land Trust because they rent for like nothing uh to farmers. Um, the, the fields and whatnot, you know, so that they can hay. Um, there's a, there's, so there's different ways to think about what a farm is and what farming is.
Right.
So there's a store that you go to and then there's the people who, you know, farm it in the way that they. Need and see appropriate for what they need for their, their livestock. Um, so there's, there's different ways to kind of approach it, I think, too.
And I think uh just because we're having this discussion now and kind of trying to get the ball rolling, um. I think it might be better, maybe if we do something like of, like during Thanksgiving week, might be a good goal. As opposed to trying to do every, something every weekend. I think we might have, not have enough time to, to that out entirely. Um, but you know, as you said, you know, you think about Thanksgiving, you think about harvest, you think about all the good things. Uh, that come out of our farms. So I think maybe that might be a good goal to shoot for. Does anyone have any objections, opinions? On a timeframe?
I think that um, trying to do, you know, uh the, all the farms would so quickly. You know, it with such a short lead time, would not give you time for publicity or to really get. Because y- you would want it to be in like the field magazine and you would want it to be invoices and all those things. And it does take time for press releases to get into print. So I would suggest doing maybe um one event toward the end of the month. And really, you know, maybe it would be lecture, you know, people coming and presenting at the library or something like that. And then have that as a lead in for maybe an ear- late spring or early summer event. That is really, you know, doing the whole subject ser- you know, the service that it deserves. Um, rather than doing it qu- quickly and not, you know, not really presenting it. Don't waste that opportunity, you know?
I agree. I like that idea, Tova.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
When we were doing the sustainable CT thing, um, it was something that I wanted to try to incorporate when we were doing the um. The little business directory that Bill Chen and his crew puts out. Um, and we have the land trust uh trail map and I thought we should have a farm. Um, trail map so that, a little pamphlet so people can get it when they're here on the weekend or whenever they're here. And they can just go around and visit all the farms. So we should just have a little map and have a little blurb about them. And I think that that would be um something really good to do with incorporating it with this too, so that it will be lasting. So whenever they're here.
Right.
Just pick that up and just go, you know, and check all the different ones out. And there was, uh, I looked into that and. Uh, I think that it was Ann at the Land Trust. Uh, gave me a link that I didn't know existed, but it has all the farms listed in all the towns. It's, somebody put it a really extensive thing together. I, I don't remember what it was called. You probably guys know what it is, but um. It has all of them listed everywhere. So that's an online thing that's already, but I just thought the piece of paper, the pamphlet. That somebody could just pick up and see a little map with little dots and.
Tourism, I think, does something like that, but I mean, it would be so nice for, you know, town pride. For us to do it for ourselves, but you know, I just wanted to make a suggestion. What if we utilize either, you know, like Facebook or something like that to have like a quick call out? Once a week or something like that to i- 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 in this autumn, you know, period. Do a call out sort of thing. In, in, in this would certainly be in tandem with what you're planning to do, but. Um, it would really kind of hmm help people new to the town meet these, meet our farmers. And, and just put a face on all these things.
We could do that with the town email blast too. Um, she was doing that for a while. She was saying, you know, uh, to check out the local businesses. And featuring a business um each week or whatever, but you could do it with that too.
And I, I run the Roxbury group. I don't know if you guys are members, but I run that. So because I'm the admin, anything I post ends up in everyone's newsfeed who's in the group. So I have access to all those people. So if there's, and I'll try to pay more attention to the Facebook page and share what you guys are sharing into the group. But anything you want me to post or do anything like that, we can, I have access. We have like five hundred members now, so.
Well, nice job. Alright, so um Caitlin, do you kind of want to take lead on this? And um maybe reach out to the farms. Tova was saying and like, you know, we could do like a meet our farmer thing and maybe, and I'm happy to help you with it, but just to initiate, you know, that contact. And say, you know, this is what we're thinking of doing, um, and then just kind of get a feel and then report back. Um, and I'm more than happy to help you with that, with that legwork, so.
Yeah, sure. I have um Kathy and Howie's. I don't have Topland's. I have um Laura at Riverbanks. Email, I can shoot her out. I could just stop by. Um, anybody else, just send me.
Yep.
Their info and I can.
You know, they're, they're seemingly farming and farm stand operations. Like there's one at, at Botford Hill, the end of Botford Hill in six. Yeah, uh, and, uh, you know, I've, they sell duck eggs, you know?
I can't hear him. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't hear him either.
Anne Kaufen, at the bottom of uh Botford Hill, she has a farm. Uh, it's mostly duck eggs. She actually, she.
Oh, yeah, Anne Kaufen.
Yeah.
I'll reach her out, yep.
Yep, I have her content, contact info if you need it. And then um Timmy Armbruster, who uh, he's the farm manager up at Topland's. I have his info too. I can get to you.
Great, excellent. And then what would you, yeah, that's great.
I have a, I have an offer. Um. What it's worth. Um, I could, I mean, if you, if you. If Caitlin, if you were to break the ice with the people and, and sort of let them know this was in the offing. If you wanted me to, I could write up, you know, uh, Facebook and, and all that sort of thing is not meant for long reading. Um, it's, it's kind of very quick, you know, in and out. And I can do, I can write something up on each person that's very, you know, quick and to the point. Talk to the, you know, talk to people and just distill it into a very, you know, basic, what they do and, and. You know, what they have, you, something about how they like, would like to present themselves. And do it like once a week sort of thing.
Sure, maybe I'll come up with like five questions or something that they could answer. And then that way it's easier for you to organize. I don't know if that would be helpful or.
Not really necessary. I could, um, I mean. Well, that yes and no, because if I don't know what they, you know, what their. Uh, you know, what their field is, what their, you know, eh, I, I, for example, I didn't know about that duck egg person.
Right, so that would be one of the questions, you know, what does your farm do? What is your hopes for Roxbury and?
Yeah, that's cool.
That type of thing and then, you know, cause yeah, I mean, the duck eggs is, is special. And then the Ozak Farm and she could tell history about that and. Okay.
I have uh Mark and Stuff Maynard. I'll send you their contact info too.
Excellent. Oh, I'm so looking forward to getting to know them. I'm excited.
Agreed to do, uh, it is a lot here. We, we, we're gonna try to do something in November, right? I, I, I just wanna see what we have agreed to do and so we can get it done.
So I'm going to reach out to the local farmers and I'm going to ask them some questions regarding. You know, let them know that we want to showcase what they do for Roxbury as um farmers. And what they grow, you know, and all that. Tova, should I ask them? Cause I know Riverbank and um Maplebank, they go to farmers markets. Is that something that I should? Ask them like when they, when the market is. I know that they go to Norwalk, they go to Bethel. Or is it just like plain old, what do you do? You know, what's the history and that type of thing?
Um, I think that, uh, actually, if um, if you just send me over the questions. I could, um, it might be most sufficient, cause really, um, all these medias, mediums are, are. Fast in, fast out and there, I don't want to waste their time asking questions that are, you know, are never gonna appear in print. So um, I, I think, you know, if I, if I know what their specialty is. If they could just um tell me that, and then I can just call them up quickly and, and it's easy. Easy for me to just do a really quick interview with them that uh just for the paragraph that I.
So I'm just basically calling them and letting them know that you'll call them?
No, you're letting me know also what they do.
Okay.
What their specialty is.
Okay, and letting them know that you'll be in contact if it's okay.
Yeah, um, but uh, just a minute, um, Erin, do we need, um, do we need photography?
I was wondering that. I mean, I think that would be a really awesome piece to have in there. Um, I don't know um if any of the farmers already have photos.
I, I can do it.
Would you like?
I wouldn't mind, um, uh, but it would have to be in November, except October's crazy, but. Um, but we, um, I could, I could go over there with a camera and do a quick portrait or. Goose sitting on her eggs.
So, but this, this is for, this is for.
Does that sound good to you, Caitlin?
Yeah, that's great. So basically I'm in charge of just contacting them, letting them know what we're thinking. And then letting the, asking them if it's alright if I give them your information and blah, blah, blah and vice versa. And what their platform.
Yeah, and, and you would send it over to me and then, um, but you would again ask them what their specialty is, so I'm not, you know.
In the dark.
Going in there blind per se, like a bat, right?
Yep, Caitlin, you may, Caitlin may also be the one that asks them, um, like the difference between Maplebank and Riverbank. Is that one has customers coming and the other one doesn't. So it could be that, you know, the, in terms of collecting that information. That might be something that just gets added at the end and you can visit them at blah, 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 you know? So, I know you brought it up before, but I think that's important just to.
Cause we don't want people just showing, I know you can go to Riverbank, they're very sweet there, but they're not always there. You know, they're out in the fields, they're out Westport, they're in Norwalk and.
Yes.
So we don't want them to just braid.
Yeah.
Garage for Riverbank.
Yeah, they do have, yep.
Um, Tony, to answer your question, this is for November, but it's nothing, it's nothing like, it's not a massive undertaking. I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna, there's gonna be a little work involved, um, but it's not gonna be like a lecture. Um, Tova had said earlier, like it, it's just gonna be kind of like this introduction to, you know, the farms in the area. And then in the summertime, uh, we could focus more on like really flushing out um each farm and, and, and. Discussing more about what they do and what they have, maybe a bit more about their history and.
I like, I like Tova's idea, um, of doing it, you do something in the, this fall and then something bigger in the spring. But I didn't want to shoot, take too much, put too much on our plate for November. This is only another month. I always had this, gotta do too much, we. End up not doing such a good job.
And uh Caitlin and Tova, do you feel as though it would be too much to do uh for November? I mean, do you feel as though you might need more time or?
Well, I was gonna do it in, um, you know, like kind of little increments because um, I, I wasn't gonna try to tackle the whole thing at once. And I was gonna try to feed each one over to you and, and it's not like we're saying, um, okay, on Friday. This is gonna go up.
Um, right.
But I think that personally, I think that people will be even more, will have even more of an audience as we move into December. I mean, I, I think we have more than four farms in this town, so that's once a week in November. But I think, you know, beginning of December, I think people will still be wanting to read about our town, our, our farmers. And um have maybe even more time to read about our farmers. So we can keep, this would be, you know, kind of like installments and the, you know, um, to be continued type thing.
I agree.
That's good.
Okay, cool. Thanks, everyone.
Do you have focus at the end of November um around Thanksgiving? Do you still want to do that? Or just wait until the, this has been trickled in?
I think the in, the incremental process that Tova's talking about would be best. Um, the month of October's been, we've all been like really going hard trying to get Bat Fest uh done. I, I know I personally would be okay with taking it a little slower. Um, I know in December, we did talk about doing something about uh birds and uh like uh songbirds. And ways to properly sanitize the feeders and what different foods do for different species and stuff. Um, and I'm gonna be working up at uh Sharon Audubon as a wildlife rehab volunteer. So I'm happy to get some more insight and info from, from them uh for December. Um, so we, we have that slated, which is good. But I think I like the idea of the trickling from November into December and then December, January, we can talk about birds a little bit. If you guys still want to do that. My animal nerd is showing, sorry.
Um, I think, you know, if you were to like tease it in the town vault and, um, and let people know that. We are, you know, doing this little series, um, our, our mini-series on, on the farms. That would be fun to kind of give it a tease and um, and sort of let. And, um, and sort of let everybody know it's in the offing and that they should be looking for it.
I'll add that to my list for Barbara for the email blast. Good idea, Tova.
Then I do like that farm map that, um, Jessica is suggesting and in farmers markets, you know, they open up, you know, spring, summer. So that's when we were talking about revisiting this as well, so that, that should give us enough time and in the winter months to kind of think about how to organize that and.
Yeah, Caitlin, and that could be where we, um, you know, really tell people the hard, hard, hard info about where they can get their products.
Okay. Uh, does anyone have anything else?
Um, I actually do, um, quickly, I know you're running out of your eight o'clock.
No, you're okay. Go ahead.
But, um, I, I, I actually saw, um, Kathy at the, um, transportation. And I also, um, buttonholed Kim on the road, um, a few minutes ago. And, and there is an interesting new, um, uh, soil health initiative that has been going on and there, you might have already heard about this, I don't know, about these new house bills that Connecticut has passed, um, very recently, having to do with, um, our soil health. And, um, but for example, uh, there's one called, um, House Bill six, four, nine, six. And I sent you over a copy, uh, just a little bit of info on, and I also sent Kim, but maybe you could distribute it. Um, and I'm just gonna read the little summary quickly about what it is about, um, because it's, it's, it's a a big move apparently. Um, it says, although House Bill six, four, nine, six does not create any new programs, it opens the door for the work be, um, being done on soil health. Additionally, it adds soil health to the erosion and sediment control statute, meaning that soil health measures can be required during construction and site stabilization. This is a major change. And then there's another, um, ha- House Bill number six, four, four, one, which, um, deals with, um, the, what is called the, let's see, um, the green, the Connecticut Green Bank. So Cr- Connecticut Green Bank is, um, legis- um, from legislation adds three major sections. One, enables the creation of stormwater authorities and includes language, uh, on nature. Um, uh, nature-based solutions slash ecosystem services. Two, updates the flood and erosion control statute to include similar language. Three, most importantly, expands the authority of the Connecticut Green Bank beyond supporting clean energy to include carbon offsets, ecosystem services, and environmental e- infrastructure. The Connecticut Green Bank folks are talking about soils and soil health is fitting right into their programs. So that's interesting, um, and, and I don't even know where that fits into whose agenda, because, um, it, it seems like it's conservation, but, um, it, it, you know, I, it, it, it's things that.
They need oversight. It actually needs oversight. So, right.
Exactly, I mean.
Don't want to be going out with test kits, testing the soil in a construction site.
So anyway, um, it's something that Connecticut is really thinking about and is thrown on our, on towns' plates and we should know about it, you know?
Thank you.
I think, uh, Margaret, um, Minor would be a very good resource for this. I know she's, she's very tuned in to what's going on in, uh, in Hartford and she's, um, I know she's been an advocate for, um, the clean water. She was the chair of the Rivers Alliance. So, uh, she's very knowledgeable about these things. We, I'll, I'll mention this to her.
It is, you know, I, I, soil health is something that was two words that were hardly ever put together until recently and it's, it's really important that they are being coupled together now.
Well, I'm gonna Google these. Thank you, Tova.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tova. All right. Anything else before we adjourn?
I just had to mention one last thing. I was asked by, uh, Jen Heaton Jones and Jennifer Baum, that are the directors of H R R A, to be, um, a member of the Regional Recycling Task Force. Um, so we meet once a month, uh, with all the members from, uh, different towns. And, uh, so I will be, we're just starting, so I will be reporting back what's going on with that. Um, but if you guys have any questions for me to ask them, tomorrow morning is the one of the meetings. So if you think of anything, um, just send email it to me and I will be glad to ask and, uh, redeveloping, uh, since Roxbury just joined them, uh, I have asked about pamphlets and educational materials, because I've been trying to put those together for the last few years for Mira, um, because theirs weren't really great. And so, um, I've been really excited to know that they're working on that, uh, to get those materials out so that we can pass them out to everyone.
Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry.
I think going forward, we need, we need to do something to get get people more educated about recycling and waste disposal. I mean, there are all kinds of issues that are floating around. I, you know, I go up there and I see people putting stuff in the wrong bins and I say, gee, we need to get the word out.
Yeah. Well, Jen Heaton Jones does lectures and workshops and all kinds of stuff like that, but, um, she had given me years ago, these little magazines that just were super, super well-done with visuals and simple tips on what to do and how to recycle everything. And so that's what I was trying to get for our town and they said that they're working on that right now.
They do have a pretty good, their website is pretty good about.
Yeah.
The stuff. You can, you can do searches and find out what's, where to put stuff. I found it pretty, pretty helpful. Uh, Massachusetts seems so far ahead of Connecticut when it comes to this sort of thing. They, they have so many towns that pay as you throw. And I don't know, I, maybe a handful of towns in Connecticut have have that. That seems to really cut down on waste. When, you know, it costs people money to throw stuff out.
Well, they've tried to do that. Barbara has said that they've tried to implement that and it didn't work.
People don't, they don't wanna, they don't want to make the sacrifice um, to sort their trash, you know, that's ba- basically the bottom line. I mean, it's politically unpopular, so nobody wants to take it on.
I think education's also a big issue when it comes to recycling. You hear a lot about wish cycling and people just not knowing what is supposed to go where and what you can recycle and what you can't. So I love the educational idea. Like, I know I'm new here, but, and I think part of why Lorenzo asked me to come is social media is kind of my forte. I've done social media marketing before. So anything that I can do to help you guys get word out and get audience about any of this stuff, I'm really glad to help. But I think when it comes to things like recycling and waste disposal, it's a lot about just lack of education.
I'd like to know, uh, you know, everyone's asking the question about the, um, newspapers going in with the plastic. You know, and we were like, what, what's happening? Are they, are they gonna s- separate it? Is it all just get burned? You know, what, what actually takes place? So, um, that's the big talk right now at the, at the center, so.
I, 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 I asked Albert that same question.
Yeah, he does.
I said, I don't know, you know?
I was there today, so I handed him ten dollars for the dehumidifier I threw out, so. I will, I'm gonna share just of, just, it's just really wonderful to listen to this conversation because in my garage in the nineteen eighties, I would meet with Dave Belin and Jack Monday. We were the first recycling committee in town. And it was before there was any recycling and we were going, how are we gonna get people to do this? And we would meet for months and finally you came up with a plan and then, you know, things happened that really it happened when the state started mandating it. We were ahead of that and nothing took place, but we tried. So it's just kind of, it's wonderful to listen to you guys talk about it, so.
Maybe we'll get the pay as you throw someday.
All right, guys. Anything else?
That'll do it.
Hi, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn at eight nineteen.
Second.
I will second.
Great. All right, guys. Great meeting. Thank you to all of our guests for coming.
Thank you for having me here. That's great.
Yeah, thank you. It was really nice meeting you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Thanks, everybody. It's great to see you.